...for today, so hopefully when we're done going through this, we will in fact adopt it. Also included in your board book is a copy of the actual facilities plan. You may notice there are a couple of things in here that do need to get filled out once we are complete today. For example, there's a section on the results of the public participation process. That's today. That's on Agenda Page 50. So if you're wondering why that's highlighted with an old date, that's the reason. We fill that in after today, after we have the results of the public discussion. So if you have any questions, any specifics of the facilities plan, I'd be happy to answer them for you. I can go through this if you'd like, but like I said, we already did back in December, so I don't know if you want me to or not.
Mrs. Flaherty. Oh, you want to give me the floor first? Okay. Could you turn to Agenda Page 49?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to start with the easy question first. Okay?
Follow this.
Yeah. We may not make that talk though.
That's okay. What do we got?
What page 49? You got there yet?
Here.
Okay. It's maybe on the floor.
All right. In the third paragraph, it says, "In conclusion, the repair method will be developed." What is on? Sepisically? What's that word?
Sepasifically. Most likely, the author of this document intended to use the word specifically.
Okay.
However, it does not appear that that was Coppins' Belichick, but I'd be happy to revise it. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to be honest. I was talking with Mike Craft, and if we go through with this, as is, it can go up to $180 plus per door and gateway for the assessment. Is this correct?
I did not prepare the financial portion of it, so I can go through it real quick, but I'd probably defer that one to Stephen or to Mike.
The first eight million was $65. I don't know why the second eight million would be, unless the interest rate changes substantially, why it would be any more than $65 again.
So we want to increase another $65 assessment to our residents already, who are already complaining about the assessments that are already too high. I just want to bring that out, because that was one of the complaints I noticed when people were campaigning this year, because when I went to other forms, everyone was complaining about the assessment already being too high.
Well, and keep in mind too, that the approval to proceed with the SRF funding does not guarantee the work or the timeframe. I think this is potentially a five-year plan.
Five years.
So when we talk about the impact of an assessment, that's making the assumption that we would approve the full amount and assess it for that year.
But the problem with that is, we didn't quite do that the first time. The first time, we did one rate assessment for the full eight million.
Which is fine. I'm just saying that's one option.
But my point is, is that if we mirror what we did the first time, it'll go into effect even though it was phased, because we generated revenue out of that. And in fact, we're generating revenue right now, for which we have not incurred principal interest payments, because we have part of it.
Yeah, yeah.
And the other thing is, is that we're wanting to institute a stormwater utility, which would help to offset.
Yeah, somewhat.
In a sense.
The cost is going to be exactly same. It's going to be whose ox gets gored. That's all the stormwater management plan is going to do. It's going to change the responsibility of who pays, is all it's going to do. The amount you're going to pay, the amount of money you've got to generate, correct me if I'm wrong, Stephen, with the principal and interest on eight million bucks, is going to be the same, whether we have a stormwater management plan or we don't. The only difference is, it's going to be a different source that's going to be picking up the tab.
Yeah.
And it'll be.
Better organization of it.
Right. It'll be more, it'll be clearer.
More equitable.
Clearer, cleaner.
And it'll be, you know, more transparent, and it'll be, I think, easier to make people understand that this is why we're instituting this stormwater utility thing.
Well, I think the other one to answer what Kathleen said, and that's why I asked the question specifically to Jessica. Everybody in this community needs to understand, we're doing this because we are being mandated to do it. It's that simple. She made that that clear today. Four to one slope. If you don't do it, we're going to send you an order, non-compliance. That's why we're doing this. And I think this is why we haven't received one to date, for the fact that we've been negligent for 30 years in doing this work. We're doing the stuff step by step, in a phased approach, and like Doug said, we can schedule it. They're not going to say anything, but if we would chalk our heels and say we're not doing it any longer, they're going to be on us, quick. And we've got a lot of people that are on these ponds that are the next 15, that are screaming the other way around, "When are you going to do my pond?"
Mrs. Flaherty, you have, I'm sure, a couple other things. Yeah, you know, I write down. Okay. Can we go to Page 39 in the agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, I'm at 2.2-2. All the ways where it says 151 linear foot, okay? Okay, this is the cheapest alternative. Somewhere, and I was looking for it, even though I wrote it down on the page, you have where that would be a better solution?
It says, "Although this installation is financially appealing, it does not result in an acceptable product."
But you had somewhere else down farther, you mentioned it again, as a acceptable solution.
You're talking about the GO2?
Um, acceptable solution.
I think it's GO2 with littoral, which is what I read.
Maybe, I think that's what it was, with littorals.
And that's why I want to see ponds 106, 7, and 8 get built, because I don't think it works.
GO2 is a stock-like material, is perpulled out along lake bank, filled in over blah, blah, blah. This application works, but is not ideal, because the fill material is placed inside the GO2, it cannot be graded to a desired slope, and once the GO2 is placed, it cannot be removed. The result is reinforced bank with a drop off at the edge of the material. Furthermore, vegetation cannot grow directly on this material, making it unsuitable for intermediate water level applications. Based on previous installation, the quotes cost repairs, pond are given automatically foot. This is the cheapest alternative, although it's financially appealing. I don't know. It might say it in there. I don't recall it being here. If it does, I don't know the context of what we said.
One of the ponds over Colonial has the GO2 around it, and it is ugly at best. All it is, is it just a big black bladder full of sand, and that's all it is to.
I'll say this about.
It looks ugly.
They did it at Cross Creek, and quite a bit of it failed.
They, nobody's recommending them.
I'll tell you, I'll say this about GO2s. There are a lot of GO2 vendors out there that are doing GO2 around because they're cheap.
Cheap.
They have a purpose, in my opinion, on commercial areas and industrial areas, that nobody really cares, they're walking on a lake bank. I think they're really good there.
And possibly limited fluctuation of water line.
Right. I think for your application, I don't think they're the right place. There are a lot of places where they can be used, like I said, commercial, industrial, all day long, but here, I wouldn't recommend.
Yeah.
Mrs. Flaherty. Okay. Okay, you have, on Page 41, I'm sorry.
All right.
All right. You have three littoral alternatives, but you have, there's no suggestion of which is the best. I didn't see anywhere along there which, when I was looking at the plan at the end, what was your best suggestion? Just wondered.
Selected alternatives. Let's see. Make sure before I say something is incorrect. The selected alternative, I'm reading on Page 49 of the agenda. It's the very top line. Littorals will be replaced at the lakes which require them. Littorals will be installed to match the current D O requirements.
Okay.
That's what this planning document was based on.
Okay. Because you also have cost-effective conclusions on Page 43.
All right, let me go to that.
I'm sorry. I wrote all these pages down.
43, cost effective. Based on the monetary and qualitative assessments, armying the lake banks were necessary with ARDS, installing diffusers and replacing the necessary littorals are the recommended alternatives. I mean, we can make that more clear. I don't disagree with your statement. We can say that, you know.
Per the D O.
Yeah, instead of using the word necessary, we can say, you know, the D O required before or something. We can do that.
All right. Could you explain what are diffusers? Are those, those aerators? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes, ma'am. They're just underwater bladders.
That's what they are?
All air.
Okay. Let me see.
Yeah, with littorals, you know, the requirements of doing a facilities plan is you have to have at least three options. Do nothing can be one option. With littorals, really not a lot of options. I mean, you're either going to plant them or you're not. So the options were planted with D O requirements or?
How many?
I'll check.
It's how much or how many.
Right. So that's, those are the options that we presented.
All right. I finished. I have on those pages. Thank you. Mr. Guy?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Tyler, if you start with your memo on Page 30. I know I'm, Stephen, I know I'm being picky, but when you talk about the estimate cost to perform the improvements is $8.2 million.
Yes.
Then I go back to Page 86, where the loan service fees and the capital life difference and everything, it totals out to more than $8.5 million. I think you're, how shall I put it? I think you're asking for trouble. If you try and say that the amount is smaller than the total was actually going to be, even though it isn't, even though the 8.2 might be correct for the actual work of the contractors, you can't discount the cost of the financing.
Total project cost.
Sure, I agree. You're right. In the memo, I think Danny was just talking about the capital cost, but you're right. The total cost to be advertised is 8,564,057.
And there's one other place. I want to call your attention to, it's, the Stormwater Facilities Plan continued. I don't see a page number on it.
Is that one on the presentation?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh.
Stormwater Facilities Plan.
This, uh, which one? SRF requirements, okay?
If you go back to the one.
It's Agenda Page 102.
102. All right, sir, I'm there.
Ah, yeah, there it is.
Uh, this is the table you looked at, the present worth analysis?
102.
Until he said it, I didn't.
I don't work on these, I don't work on these numbers any longer, but the line numbers three and four, lake restoration, lake bank restoration, ARDS versus GO2, going across from ARDS from 7.4 million to 7.7, and GO2 from 5.5 to 10.9, automatically raised the flag with me that there's something missing or miscalculated in one or the other of those calculations, and I would suspect it's the second one on GO2.
Well, present worth includes both O and M and capital. That's what's causing it.
Yeah, so what we did there was, the capital cost, estimated capital cost, for ARDS is higher than the GO2 by roughly $2 million. And then we factored in an operation and maintenance cost per year of GO2 at $18,000 roughly, ARDS is $13,000 roughly. And I think the way, if I recall correctly, I think the way they did that basically was, they said, "This one will have a 30-year estimated life, this one will have a 15-year estimated life," and then basically just divided it out between the years to come up with a replacement cost. I think that's what they did. Just basically doubling the GO2 because you're going to have to.
$200,000 a year isn't going to end with five or six million dollars.
It is when you use the capital recovery factory for present worth of O and M, it's multiplier of about 10.5 is calculating in these jobs. So you take the O and M costs multiplied times 10, and if you look at this, you do that, and it comes out almost exactly correct.
So as far as the actual, you know, interest percentage for ANM that they use to calculate this, I don't know the answer to that. I could get that for you if I like, but the reason that net present value at the end is higher is because of the O and M cost for the GO2 was higher.
I understand that. I understand that. But the O and M cost between the two is less than $200,000 per year. But yet, the difference between those two lines, the GO2, you know, skyrockets on the net present value.
I mean, I would be happy to get with Stephen and double-check those numbers and make sure they're correct. I mean, I don't have the math in front of me, but we can definitely do that, and I'm sure that it is.
I'm doing this for your sake, not mine.
No, I appreciate it. Let me, let me do this. Stephen's the one that did these. Let me get with him and see exactly what numbers he used.
Who did it, Stephen?
Yes, sir. Not, not that Stephen, for trust.
No, Stephen.
He's saying, oh.
He got defensive quick. Makes me scared. It makes me think he doesn't like him. Let me, let me do this. I will get with Stephen. I will double-check the math behind this, and if it is incorrect, you'll be the first person that I let know.
And if you want to throw the formula in as an appendix?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea.
Madam Chairman, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Mr. Banks?
Yeah, I'm good.
Mr. Tinkelman?
Only one question. Tyler, when you're doing the, because we've not done this before on facility planning, where we do in the aeration littorals, when you did the aeration capital cost calculation, did you include an estimated value that we're going to have to pay FPL to get power from A to B?
Kind of.
Did you use the average cost per acre of basically the Pelican reserve ponds to come up with your cost?
That's exactly it.
Okay. So it was inclusive of that in their cost?
Yeah, so Pelican, the most, the closest most apple project we had was the two Pelican jobs that did. We took the average per acre cost, surface acre of lake cost for those two jobs. Those two projects both included the FPL upgrade. Are they the exact same apple flat? No, they're not. But that was the best cost we had. That's what we used.
That's all I needed. Thank you.
And I did not have anything, so. Mrs. Flaherty. I'm sorry. Did we look into any form of grants before you went right through the, this funding?
Yes. So the best grant, in my opinion, that you have a shot at is called a TMDL grant.
I'm sorry?
That's a TMDL grant. It is put on by the state of Florida, by the DEP, and it specifically touches on water quality and reducing nutrient loading into impaired water bodies. The prob, we've applied for it twice. One time, we got kind of close, and one time they said no. The problem that Gateway has, is a problem or not a problem, depending on how you look at it. You don't have impaired water bodies.
Water quality's good.
That's the problem. So the problem is, your water quality's good, nobody wants to give you anybody to fix it. So the last time we applied for it, we wrote the justification, which is true. I shouldn't laugh about it. We wrote the justification that we eventually discharged into a zero bay. Zero bay isn't a paired water body. So, you know, if we're at the top, the one at the bottom is impaired. Why don't we fix the one at the top, and it'll make the one at the bottom better? It's kind of loose logic, right? A short version of the story is, we've applied for them, we will continue to apply for them. That's the one that you're, I think you got the best shot at.
Which is still a very low shot.
What, one of the hundred?
Yeah.
Because I'm trying to reduce this cost to residents. This is a very expensive cost to them, to keep, yeah, keep their assessments going up, up, up. I mean, and their pays are not going up, up, up.
I agree.
So far.
Yours?
So one other thing I'll say about this is, this money is basically, how do I say? It's reserved, I guess that's the right word?
Encumbered?
Encumbered to be used. Doesn't mean you have to spend it all. We could go and do a, something lesser, something more cost-effective. You can always explore different options further down the road to reduce the cost. Does not mean you have to spend that 8.2, 8.5 million dollars. It just says that that cost is encumbered, is reserved for your use, should you have the construction projects to go along with it.
Go with the time.
And you are going to apply for that, ma'am?
Yeah, it's twice a year. I don't know when the next deadline, I think, is, March.
Just, yes, we should.
Just, just one more. The SRF, the last time we were involved, it was what, it was operated on what I used to call an LC, a letter of credit, or a takedown? Is that still in operation so that we only had to pay interest on the amount that we actually spent?
Yes.
And, and, thank you very much.
So.
Then a short, I would suggest is, there were a number of changes that were, comments made as far as added, and Tyler's mentioned some of those. I guess we'll go through all those, and I was suggesting the board, the board's applying to adopt the resolution, which would adopt the plan as with the changes, including the correction of the date, adding the formulas and appendix, re-looking at the calculations, and if necessary, make the adjustments in, correct type of graphical errors. I'm not sure if I caught all of them or not.
Sure, you want me to screen through the ones that I wrote down?
Yes, and then after, once you have, you have to.
Yeah, I was going to say, let me open it up to see if there is any public comment.
So first, sorry.
Just a quick comment. Going back to the question you asked, Bill, if you look, if you look, I think, and I didn't get all the numbers completely, but if you look at the annual maintenance, the percentage difference between the annual maintenance on the one and the annual maintenance on the other, it's about a 40% increase, and that's just about what the total, the total capital is. It's about 40%. In other words, from 388 to 533 is about the same percentage increase as from 7.8 to 10.9.
You're right, but you have to be careful about duty percentage.
I understand that, but it certainly explains a chunk of it.
When EPA developed this 30, 40 years ago, doing this whole present worth planning deal, their whole reason for bringing this out, predominantly on wastewater, was they didn't want to see communities going out and spending a real small amount, a cheap way of capital cost of doing something, that had an exorbitant operation and maintenance cost. They wanted to have a analysis that would compare the two and put them on an equal footing, such at the end, you see what the best deal is over the planning period, which is 15 years or 30 years or whatever.
Who, who you?
EPA did that. That's, they started that about 40 years ago.
State EPA?
Federal. Anytime you wanted to get federal grants and or federal loans, you had to go through what they call this present worth analysis, exactly like what he's done right here. And if you went into them to try to get, at that time, it was Grant Program. If you went there with a Grant Program, and you wanted to house a recommendation of your community to take something that was not the best present worth, you'd have a hard time getting any money from them. They didn't want you to spend money on an item that was cheap, that was going to kill you on O and M. And then likewise, they didn't want you to spend the money on something that was expensive, that had equally high O and M.
And just for the record, I just wanted to say that the one public comment came from Mr. Philamese. So should I close the public hearing now before we go? Okay. Have a motion?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is closed, and that brings us to the resolution. And what were the items that you had that need to be incorporated into the resolution for changes to, to read those?
Just, yeah, so the first one is on Agenda Page 42. That's the present worth analysis. That's the same one that Bill was referencing in the PowerPoint. Basically, just to double-check those numbers and provide the formulas in there.
The formula will be included as an appendix, I think you indicated.
We can just write it at the bottom of the table.
Yeah, that's fine.
The next revision is on Agenda Page 43, and this, just to clarify, the word necessary that are in fact D O require littorals, under the cost-effective conclusion. Next change I have is on Agenda Page 49. Figure out how to spell the word specifically. The next one is on Agenda Page 50. This is under the public participation process. I'm just going to change the date for today. I think that's it for the facilities plan. Anybody have anything else?
Looking to approve Resolution 2019-1.
In the, in the Stormwater Facilities Plan dated as of November 27, 2018, as amended by Mr. Wayne Ray, in accordance with.
Make that addition.
Andy, have a second?
Second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye. Motion passes four to one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go get your kids.
I have, I think, one of the things, maybe you'd like me to stick around. What else do I have? The only other thing I think that I have is just the status of past corporations. If you guys have any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer them. I will mention, I don't know if this is at early in the meeting, when the other folks were here, Chris and Margaret and I did meet with Lee County folks yesterday to go over, close out the permits from the previous lakes, which I actually think, for a change, was a pretty productive meeting, so.
A good meeting.
I think we have a very clear path on how to close those out, so that's a good thing.
Yes. I thought so too. I think that they, that was very helpful, and now you know exactly what they're looking for and how to get it through. Actually, it went well. They, they didn't slap us, slap our wrist too hard.
No, and they came here today, so I think they, they got real mad at us.
If you have any questions, just try to go right.
Two, two quick ones before we leave. Office expansion, report, plans, whatever, status, and the hydraulic modeling status, where we have on both of those.
This office site plan you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yes.
This office site plan, we have the LDO application prepared. We are going to plan on using the existing survey, boundary survey, that was prepared for the last one. We have ordered survey for updates of topo when the new stuff has been built out here. They are supposed to come down, not next week, but the following week, to complete their survey. The parking layouts are more or less done. The one part that I'm missing that I believe Stephen and Chris were working on, Stephen, our Stephen, sorry, not Stephen, was the size of the building, like the actual footprint of the building that we wanted to put, and then we can.
Was it 2250?
1500. Right, and I was overlooking that, the state with that D O, and I should have it tomorrow from William Scott, so he can get some updated drawings for us.
And I think specifically, he was, I don't know, it's a trailer, right?
And he just wants square footage of them all.
Is it, I mean, but is it, it's a, like a?
Modular.
Modular 10 by whatever, right? Okay.
And then the other one, hydraulic model status?
Surface water hydraulic model has been run, time number one. We calibrated it a little bit for the area to the south and east on Crossford Daniels for that big, I don't know what you would call it, area over there?
Airport.
Airport parcel. He, the first run, there were some big differences between the recorded flow data and what we had, so he's going through now, trying to figure out what may be causing that. That's pretty good.
Did you do anything, or is your guy just doing it? Do any research, because I can't get an answer to the question. Tree line in that area is humongous source of water, that when I go out there and look at it, when I started about the school, coming toward Gateway, and when I go away, heading toward the Pelican Reserve Golf Maintenance Facility, all that water looks like it comes into our canal. Was that analyzed in the hydraulic model whatsoever?
He's got, there's a portion of tree line that I think does sheet flow into there and is intended to sheet flow into there. The rest of it does not, as far as I can tell.
Because there's inlets, all the inlets, I haven't ever seen the plans for tree line, and that would tell us a lot. If we can see where those drainage lets go. I've been told that the over behind Weir two and Pelican Reserve, that great big monstrosity structure has a thirty-six inch pipe connected to tree line. That's what I have always been told, I have not.
Which one does?
If you look at the Weir, Weir two.
Yeah.
If you're walking down to Weir two, if you look to your left, there is this, it's gotta be six foot by six foot structure.
Okay.
It's an overflow, like above a lot.
Right.
I have been told that there is a thirty-six inch pipe in that that connects it to tree line. If that's the case, a thirty-six inch pipe could put in one heck of a lot of water and influence, and it's above Weir two. Could influence the hydraulic analysis. So my question is, has somebody looked at the tree line plans to determine the scope of water that comes off? And then in addition to that, and we'll be maybe talking about later, is do we have any input of water from either plantation, I'll get you out real quick, plantation, Botanica, or what's the other one? One more. Arborwood. Arborwood. Do any of those impact our calculations that were not included in the Johnson analysis in eighty-six and eighty-seven?
The answer to that is no. Arborwood Phase Three is accounted for, because that one does come to us, the rest of Arborwood does not, it goes south. It doesn't come to us, not the same drainage path. Specifically on tree line.
What about plantation?
Uh.
I thought plantation had a maybe twenty acres plus or minus on the south side of Pelican Reserve?
The very northern end drains to that wetland up there, and there's one basin, but it's like, it's like one street. That one does.
Okay.
That does come through that basin and that wetland.
And then the last one is Botanica and the school, did those come to us at all?
I don't know about the school. Botanica does not, I do not know about the school. On tree line, I don't think what you're saying would make sense. I'm not saying it doesn't, I'm just saying it shouldn't, because they're different control elevations, so I don't know why I would go into that.
That structure there is weird.
Yeah, I don't know about that.
To me, if I were gonna take and put a tree line, or have tree line discharge, I'd discharge it there at the two box culverts. Why would you run three hundred yards of thirty-six inch pipe? Makes no sense, but that's what I was told.
Yeah, I don't think I would, I think tree line goes south to the other box culverts. Fun fact, that was my very first job was serving.
Well, Gavitz, the lawyer told me, so I take these, usually pretty sharp on that stuff. Just, just look at the, the plans and verify that.
We can get to this mixture.
That's not a lot yet.
Anything else for Tyler?
No.
Thank you, Tyler.
Thank you all.
Like, like Mr. Guy said, go get your kids.
Pick mine while you're at it. And take them to your house.
Thanks, Tony.
That brings us to the consent agenda, which is the minutes of December sixth.
Move approval.
Take it.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It brings us to actually five B, because we went through this status. So consideration of proposed storage facility.
See, I'm gonna hand a couple things out. You can just take one and pass it down.
Okay.
And I think I have enough for Stephen and Mike, and there might even be enough for.
Anybody in the office?
Yeah, I think there's ten, so I mean.
But before you get into this, one thing was in the stuff that Chris sent out in the board book. Are we allowed to do without a, that damn word, nasty deal, bond?
Validance.
Bond validation on ten-year loan?
If it's over five, you have to do the bond validation.
We have some validation, any borrowing more than ten years, five years.
Okay, so what, why would we be looking at?
I'm just giving you the numbers.
Okay. Well, if we're gonna do any financing, I think we want it limited to five years.
And the point of that is to show that basically we would then have to be using cash to offset it. We would have to put cash towards it and finance the remainder to stay under what we're bringing in, or it'd be a loss.
Which, and I'll.
You mean, see, if you subsidize.
And what you're, what you're gonna, once it gets around to you, I think what you're gonna speak to is probably very similar to what, what I was putting together.
Yeah, so basically I've just put together, you know, the options for paying for it, and, you know, it'd be using our cash reserves to fund it, financing the project, or putting money towards a project, financing the remainder. I put three different types of revenue models with some expenses factored in, basically as it's laid out now with the three different lengths. And then I took one where there's, in the original plans, there's like twenty-five sixty-foot lots, and I don't think the twenty-five sixty-foot lots would be necessary, it seems a lot of our people have twenty, twenty-five foot trailers. So that you could split off and, and generate a little bit more revenue from. We basically kind of went with estimated expenses of just general maintenance repairs and electricity for lights out there, the gate, and just mowing of some of the grassy areas. We were gonna go with like fifteen thousand a year, twelve hundred a month, puts it right at fourteen-four. That's our best estimate with that, there's not a whole lot that would go on there, especially to be new, that you would hope there wouldn't be many repairs. We also have, I handed out to you, and at the time of writing this memo, I didn't have it, but what I wrote, forty to fifty of those people from the waitlist would still be interested. There's an updated, Julie actually went through a waiting list of almost ninety people, calling them, leaving voicemails, talking to them, some of them were on the list since like two thousand and fourteen. And as you can see, of the eighty-six, forty-seven wanted to stay on, fifteen wanted off, nine got rid of their boater RV, and there's fifteen still waiting to hear from. She also, when she made those phone calls, used this and gave them those prices, that they are tentative prices, they could be less, they could be more, are you okay with that? And that was kind of her question is, they're looking at these rates, would you still be willing to pay them, do you wanna stay on the list?
If you went to five years, Mike, to avoid the bond validation process, what dollar value of cash would be necessary to finance this?
At five years?
Yes.
Well, the five years, the five sixty, and that's assuming it's five sixty, would be a hundred and twenty-one thousand. So to run it back, I mean, we would be, we'd have to increase these prices a little bit, because at a hundred percent, we would be at almost a hundred thousand. So essentially, we'd have to shift these up each probably ten to fifteen.
Is it marketable?
Is it marketable? I, I believe so, and the, and the reason I say is, and I know you had mentioned some of the lots charge a hundred and eighty, a couple hundred. Now, there are some around here that charge that, but they're covered, they have washdown bays, they have electricity, they have things that we won't be offering. However, when I tried calling around just places around here, I couldn't find an available spot. And one of the places said, I said, well, can I just get a price, because I'm considering what to buy? Acting like I was gonna get a unit, and he said, I can't tell you, because if I have a hundred available, it's X. If I have five available, it's more.
Three X.
It's literally at demand, so.
So what kind of a markup do you have to have, assuming a five-year loan, that would minimize our cash to a hundred thousand dollars?
Roughly, just going off of this, about twenty percent of these numbers.
Twenty percent increase over?
Twenty percent of what I have on here, the eighty-five, ninety-five, one oh five, one.
And you, you're more knowledgeable, and I certainly am on this, is that simple?
Yes, yeah. I mean, even at a twenty percent increase, even Warren, I think based on some of his numbers, we're still probably at best at the median, you know, so.
Now, there is the Cube Smart opening, I'm not sure when, but right there at Tree Line and Colonial. Looking at their websites, they have car lots, they have RV lots, and they start at about a hundred and fifteen.
Yeah, and that's great too.
So assuming they're about the same there.
There will be a little bit of competition, but what people are paying for, for is the convenience of having it right here. And there's, I have been here, you know, fourteen, fifteen years. I know that for eighty-five, or even if we can tweak that, you know, to maybe, you know, add ten more spots or get to a hundred, and ideally I was hoping for a hundred slips, just because that's what I've been working the numbers off of. We're not gonna have any problem, I guarantee, I'll, I was a betting man, I would put money on it, that we won't not have any problem selling these, these pieces out. To Warren's piece, and I'm glad you put this together, and what I handed out, Warren, I'm not sure if you, if you saw it, but it really speaks to what, what Mike's been saying. My whole support behind this, this project, even as the increase has gone up substantially since we first started talking about it, it was like a hundred and eighty thousand, it might even have been cheaper than that, is the fact that I felt like we could self-fund, that we could fund it through revenue generated, through the rentals, and it not impact residents or impact assessments. Now, that could change slightly, well, if we go reserves to offset the twenty percent, to make it feasible in order to stay within the five-year, because I was thinking a ten-year, because at a ten-year, we're basically at, at a payment of sixty-five to fifty, sixteen to fifty a month. I believe just based on eighty slips at eighty dollars a month, that would generate about eighty-one thousand six hundred a month, which gives us a net revenue of sixteen, sixteen grand. So we would do two things, one, at ten years, we'd be able to fund the note and fund the maintenance, but we'd also have to go through bond validation, and so, so it's.
Or another fifty thousand.
But to, in a ten-year, your break-even point actually happens at about seven, seven years. And then anything over the ten years becomes, I mean, that's, that's all, you know, net, net revenue. And just to give you some numbers on, on a, on a ten-year, based on my numbers, we would, our net revenue, and that net revenue equals, you know, minuses what we pay off the loan, is about five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So in fifteen years, we would have made at a minimum five hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars based on this expansion. I'm not opposed to five years, as long as we could offset it through, through our reserves or something that is not gonna impact the residents.
The other thing is, we don't have any accelerated schedule either. We've got a constant flow through the ten years, I would think that we'd have two, two and a half, three percent per year increase in the revenue.
Yeah, and I think there's.
In the rates that we charge.
Yeah, yeah, and Bill, sorry to interrupt, but, and I even think that my numbers are probably never in twenty, thirty percent on the light side.
And there's a, there's another way to look at this too, is do you wanna limit the Gateway residents to benefit? Or are you opening up to outside of Gateway? Because to me, if you're opening up outside of Gateway, charge premium or charge more, are you trying to benefit just the residents with the storage, or are you just simply trying to make money?
I'd certainly add a surcharge for out of Gateway.
And right now. And I think we're not even gonna have to worry about that discussion, because I think we're gonna, we're gonna have a waiting list, even with eighty-five or a hundred slips.
And, but you're of the opinion though, if we go to five years, which I'm totally opposed to going to ten, simply because I don't wanna spend fifty thousand dollars on bond validation. But if we would go five years, and we would have an accelerated rate schedule, or two, two and a half percent every year add-on, can we do this for less than, or for a hundred thousand dollars of cash?
Can we do this with just pulling out a hundred thousand from reserves?
Will a hundred thousand dollars cash make this work in five years?
It could, I mean, you, right now, just as it is now, you're at a payoff of like six and a half years.
Yeah.
It could. Now, and, and to also think and step completely off of the financial side of it, there's the other things like admin of it. Also, I think, because I've spent my entire life on a boater, in an RV, and dropping it off and picking it up, gates don't work, people park in your spot, people park in two spots, there can be headaches. And we already are so limited, and like for now, simple things of collecting the registration insurance for twenty-one people, it can cause our staff here just headaches. So now we're going to ninety-five. We don't have a type of software which you could look at that could just do this thing itself. We're gonna have to have somebody on call when the guy wants to get his boat to get out fishing at four-thirty in the morning, and the gate won't open, it's happened to me, at four-thirty in the morning. And then your whole days, you know, so, so then there's somebody that's gonna have to come out and fix this, there's, there's all these other factors, and there's also the big thing, if you wanna go back to financial, and I'm all for RV storage lots, but I'm just.
Yeah, there's a big, there's a big picture, yeah.
There's also, this is almost six hundred thousand dollars, and most projects go over. Think about the two and a half million we've been talking about for storm sewers for the past six months, four months. This is six hundred thousand dollars, and if we're somehow finding it, of course, those are gonna be financed, and I'm, I'm saying, there's definitely higher priorities than something that's not gonna even provide us a benefit for at least six years. So there's other things to consider with that too, I mean, there's theft, we've had it here, it's happened personally to us, brand-new engine stall, I mean, there's so many other things that, that go with it, it's the liability of it. We're not in the business of the RV lot, we're, you know, we're in assessment, we're supposed to maintain this infrastructure, not the gravel line, so I'm just trying to, I don't wanna be like negative, but I'm trying to bring all the pieces that, put the puzzle together, that we have a lot of priorities, where the board and the district is constantly reaching for money.
Yeah.
And we just added a bit.
Mr. Guy, you had wanted to make a comment.
I did. Mike, how confident are you that you can get a loan at three percent?
Right now?
Yes, right now.
It could be higher, it could be four, it could be, it could be five, especially.
If you said five, I wouldn't have a, I wouldn't have a question, but three seems awful low to me.
And, and right now, it could be, now, I'm keeping, I know the SRF is low money, but I'm basically just using a three, it could be four, it could be five, depending on if we win the governmental non-tax route. Now, speaking with a representative at Iberia, it probably wouldn't be beneficial to go the non-tax route, and they would also need collateral and pledge revenues from it, which we would do, I'm assuming anyway, revenues from this would be pledged towards the loan. I don't know what type of collateral they would require on a four to five-year term.
Firstborn.
Yeah, probably.
My dream, or I thought we asked that a month ago, that did we go to Iberia and ask them if they, they would give us a loan?
Three and a half.
Three and a half?
Three and a half.
Okay, so.
What I would do that was for.
Did you use three and a half and do the disc calculation?
This is three.
So a little bit more.
Yeah, I mean, it's still more.
Did, um, did, was there any consideration given to public-private partnership? Like, we rent the land and let someone else run this facility?
I have not, it's a consideration. Again, it's just another thing that we have to try to make sure.
Well, I was thinking more of the, the public-private partnership, they would run it. They would have the guy on call it, that would have to come out.
And do we build it? So just made it?
No, no, no.
They set the rates and charges?
We would lease the land to them.
We'd lease the land to them, and they would put the facility up and run it.
So, so they would be charging the rates or assessing the charge and the fees to?
Right.
Yes, you're gonna just add fifteen percent for the middle, hence why I'm guessing that's all you're gonna do.
There's also the.
That makes it worse.
Thing where you still put the target on our back, like when people call here, and something's broken in the front yard, and it was really Comcast.
That's true.
They're gonna associate that with gateway.
It's a graded analysis. It's a graded analysis.
They'll just think it's Gateway, I would assume, you know, and it.
I just wondered if there was any consideration given that, because I know that idea's been tossed.
Yeah, I'm sure you possibly could, I mean, they're building another storage unit right outside of, I think just north of Gateway on eighty-two. Now, it's not gonna have this, it's not gonna have boater RV, I don't believe, it's just like cubes, but.
Oh, that's a one over by Colonial.
No, this one's right south of that neighborhood, I think Shul.
Are, are we talking about all this, is this either a thumbs up or a thumbs down right now? Is that where we're at?
I think we.
There's nothing else to kick around, in my opinion.
No, I mean, it's, either we're gonna do it or we won't.
Mr. Flyer, do you have a question or comment? Aye.
So, if the recommendation is to go five years, to offset, to offset the gap between revenue generated and the loan amount, is to subsidize that through reserves, right? I mean, that's, that's basically what we're talking about, right? Because we do not want this to impact the residents, we do not wanna assess this.
No, but, but remember, it does stem down, I mean, that's less money that we have to put towards.
Right, right, but that's why we have reserve.
Things for the waterways and stuff like that, so.
Well, the issue is, do you wanna take and borrow the money at that low rate and use the reserves to pay the principal interest, or do you wanna use that low, buy down six hundred thousand to five hundred thousand?
Well, basically, ultimately what will happen is there'll be something that we'll fund through, through the reserves, whether it's this or something else, as we move forward, just to offset the difference. All we're trying to say is, we don't want this to come, we don't wanna assess residents.
What do we have in the budget for twenty nineteen for this line item?
You do not have a budget line item.
We don't have any money reserved, so this would be robbing the OO one reserve account to the tune of a hundred thousand dollars.
Robbing, no, but it would be utilizing some of the unassigned cash reserves.
Your choice of words. That's usually what I was hearing in the community.
Well, I mean, again.
That sounds, that sounds a lot like what I hear coming out of Washington, it's not your money.
Well, it would be using some of the reserves, but then you gotta keep in mind, once you get past your, your payback period, now this particular facility would be.
Stand on its own.
Standing on, well, standing on its own, if not generating.
Generating revenue.
To put into.
And we pay that back, right?
But after the, I'm talking about after the payback.
Yeah, yeah.
We're looking at like a six. Not only a payback, but it would also be net.
That has to be a stipulation that this money go back into the reserve.
Yeah, again, that's, that's, right now, it's about six and a half years, at least.
And that's at three and a half percent, which we don't, not really sure we get.
Three.
That's a three, so this would go up.
A little.
Longer.
And we don't have bids either.
And it seems to me, I'm looking at this five hundred and seventy-one vibe, and wasn't the last one that we got over six hundred thousand?
Yeah, this is low, that's probably.
The one that I have is five sixty. The one that I had was five sixty.
Yeah, five, five sixty.
Like five...
What would be, what would be wrong, because we're concerned about the numbers, what would be wrong, because we have minimal costs involved? Let's put it out for bid and probably get what the real numbers are.
The construction bid?
Yep, put it out for bid.
Well, I mean, we can, we can, we proceed to do it, and if bids don't come back favorably, we can either put it on hold or can...
Same thing, that's where I'm at, is let's find out what for real the numbers are, because the bids might come in four-eighty, in which case, it would make this a lot, lot better. And on the other hand, it might come in seventy, in which case...
I mean, there's a, there's a breaking point, so...
It might sink like the Titanic. I, I suggest we go out for bid.
Could come in closer to a million.
I'm sorry?
Could come in closer to a million.
Well, we need to know, we're just guessing here.
Be optimistic in that other direction.
I wouldn't wanna make a motion to proceed or to kill it until we got bids. If we got the design done and everything's ready to go, and we got the permits, I don't know why we wouldn't do that. As, as we're paying this advertising cost.
You gonna make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Everybody understands the motion?
No, please, quit the motion.
Motion is, before we make a decision on what position we're gonna take on the storage facility, we put the plans and specifications out for bid to see what the costs are.
So we're putting it out for bid? Before final approval?
Because we're not gonna be able to go to the bank without those bids anyway.
They're gonna wanna see construction plans.
They're gonna wanna see construction plans. So it's minimal cost, we've already paid for the plans and the engineering, so the only cost we have is the advertisement. That's my...
Okay, we have, any further discussion on that? We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.